Okay, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 5:32 PM. And I'll call attendance by Zoom. Uh, roll call attendance. So from Allford, Charles Kitchen.
Here.
Lucy is here. Uh, Eggerman, George McGurn.
Here.
Great. Tom Burkle. No, Tom. Okay, um, Danelle. Great. Um. Great Barrington, Deb Phillips.
Here.
Peter Taylor.
Here.
Steve Bannon.
Here.
Monterey, John Silbert.
Here.
Don Coburn.
Here.
Great. Laura Rodriguez.
Hello.
Hello. New Marlboro, Jane Burke.
Here.
Tara White.
Here.
Susan Smith.
Here.
Great. Sheffield, Bonnie Silvers.
Here.
And Nadine Haver.
Here.
Colin Smith.
Here.
Great. Stockbridge, Patrick White. Patrick? Okay. Christine, keep a lookout for him and Tom. I know Patrick's planning to join. Um. Sean Stephen. I thought I saw Sean. Now?
Sean's on.
Okay. Um, and Michael? Canales, are you on?
He was.
Oh, he was?
Yeah.
He's on.
He is on?
I am here.
Oh, great. Um, and then West Stockbridge, Marie Ryan.
Yep, I'm here. I don't have a name at my thing, but I'm here.
Okay. Molly Thomas.
Here.
And our new member, Andy Potter.
Here.
Great. Okay, great attendance tonight. Thank you, everyone. Um. I think the first order on the agenda is introducing our new members. Is Julie on? Is Julie Anamon?
I, I am here.
Okay, so Julie is an advisory member, um, that's helping us out with the regional school district agreement work. So Julie is from Sheffield. Julie, you wanted to say a couple of words about yourself?
Uh, sure. I know many of the people here, but I'm excited to join the work. Um, I'm a former select board member and currently Chair of the Sheffield Finance Committee. Um, but I also have worked in education for many years at Berkshire Community College, recently retired and um, have a background with career in TECAD also.
Well, we're thrilled to have you on board. Welcome. Um, Andy Potter, West Stockbridge, a couple of words?
Sure, um, uh, recently, uh, became a select board member in West Stockbridge. Prior to that, uh, at least a couple of years ago, I spent, excuse me, six years representing West Stockbridge on the Berkshire Hills Regional School District. Um, employed as a policy analyst with the National Archives and Records Administration.
Welcome. We're very happy to have you on the board. And Michael? For some reason, I'm not seeing you on the screen. But could you just introduce yourself?
Michael Canales, Town Administrator in Stockbridge.
Okay, thank you and welcome. Um, and there's Patrick. Patrick has arrived. So Tom Burkle is still not on, right? Okay.
I believe he's out of towns.
Okay, so we're not expecting him. Alright, um, so subcommittee membership of our new members, um, Michael and Andy, think about which subcommittees you might want to join, and we can bring that up at our next full board meeting, but feel free to attend any and all of those subcommittee meetings in the interim. Um, you're welcome to, to participate in those meetings, whether you'll, you are a formal member of the subcommittee or not. So, um, we're going to move on to the other substantive things on the agenda. I just want to acknowledge that we received a communication from the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee on Monday. Um, we have that on the agenda as item seven. Uh, we will address the communication uh, at the end of the meeting. I'd like to leave sufficient time at the end of the meeting to do that. So uh, I'd like people to be as efficient as they possibly can in their comments. Uh, as we work through our agenda tonight, the main item on our agenda tonight, of course, is introduction of the draft eight-town regional school district agreement. And we have on the line, and I want to introduce to everyone, our Planning Board Council. Russell, Russell, you want to just introduce yourself to the group?
Hello, everybody. I'm Russ Dupre. I'm an education attorney. Our firm represents about seventy, seventy-five schools in the state and many regions, and we've been involved in regionalization efforts like this many times in the past, so we're here to help that process.
Thank you, and thank you for attending tonight. So I'm hoping it's 5:38. I'm hoping that we will have an hour to talk about the, uh, eight-town regional school district agreement. Um, and at least twenty minutes or so to address the communication from the Southern Berkshire School Committee. So, so that sort of leaves forty minutes for us to do everything else, just so people know. Uh, we're only ten minutes in, so we're on schedule so far. Um. And I just want to begin with just a couple of observations. Uh, we all recognize that talking about a school merger is not for the faint of heart. It's a hard process. Uh, emotions run high because the stakes are so high. And I don't want to do anything to dampen the passion people feel about the topic. Passion is a good thing, especially when it comes to public education. But I would ask, as I've asked before, that everyone assume good intentions. I think we learned that that's lesson number one in how to have difficult conversations. You need to assume everyone comes to the table with good intentions. Uh, don't assume that you know the motivations of others who may disagree with you, or even of others who may agree with you. Uh, speak personally, speak about what you intend, what you think, what motivates you, and don't assume that you know the motivations of others. Um, I ask everyone to speak with respect and try very hard not to interrupt each other. And with that, I'd like to get into the meat of the discussion. Uh, Bonnie, I do see you have your hand up.
Um, a couple of things. One, approving the minutes, and two, um, I, I want to know, these new people, like formally on the, and how was that done?
The moderator selected them uh, to replace people who had stepped off. Roger Kavanaugh stepped off for West Stockbridge and, um, Nick stepped off for Stockbridge sometime back.
I'm entirely legitimate, I tell you.
Oh, no, I just wanted to know how, how it happened.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm gonna hold on the minutes just because of our time constraint, and if we have time at the end, we'll get to the minutes, but I, I'd like to get into the meat of the the meeting, if that's okay with you.
Of course.
Okay, um. Don't see any more hands. So Jake, I'm gonna turn it over to you with an update on budget developments, on funding requests, and update on advocacy.
Yeah, Christine, can you just give me screen share? Make me co-host.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, there you go.
Thank you. All right, folks, I'm, hopefully you can see some stairs going up. Um, so I always assemble a slideshow for a couple of purposes. One, it serves as uh, kind of a note sheet, a cheat sheet, um, and a compliment to the minutes when they're published and approved, but also for folks who can't attend. Uh, they can review the slides. Some of these slides are context slides, so I'm gonna move through them very quickly. Um. Uh, we have our agenda for today. You already got that minutes. We got it. Um. I put a little header slide in here just for folks who are sort of scanning, why do we repeat the same slides every single meeting? It's really, again, just to remind folks why we reform, what our mandate is, what our essential questions is, what process we followed, and where we are in terms of findings and, and process forward. So real quickly, the mandate, um, as you all know, is to study the advisability of potentially forming a regional school district. The, um, essential questions are, um, can the two districts function better together or separately? And if so, uh, how, what is the best structure to accomplish that? Ultimately, our aim is to develop community-informed decisions, uh, that address the challenges that we face, shrinking enrollment, uh, stretched resources, uh, and potentially shrinking or limited educational opportunities for our students. The process to date has been, uh, we sort of are describing right now as three phases. Started obviously with organization, uh, phase one was baseline work, phase two is the work we completed with the final analysis report, uh, and the preferred model, and phase three is where we are right now, which is additional research on that particular preferred model and the drafting of a, a regional agreement, which you will see in first form tonight. Again, the board voted on April, uh, twenty-six to move forward with the preferred option, which is that the two districts form a single K-12 regional district among the eight towns, uh, with a shared high school to be built on the campus in Great Barrington. And again, I put a link in the show to the file analysis, but lots of documents for people who are new to the board, uh, on our website. Already done subcommittee memberships, so let's jump into budget. Um, at every meeting, I gave an update on the budget, and, um, I have three slides on the budget today. These follow, um, if you were to look at the last slide, share the last meeting, to kind of how we um, framed the budget situation, uh, where we stand. So currently, we have $21,000 in hand. Uh, we started with around $50,000, um, that we had sketched out as a carrying, um, our effort through the end of this month, actually, three months, uh, July, August, and September. We've been able to stretch those dollars a bit, so we have $21,000 left in the town funds, which are being managed by Berkshire, uh, Berkshire Hills. In addition to that, we are receiving some contributions from Burke Twelve. Uh, we secured a contract with Mary Nash to help with public relations and social media and some editing work. Um, we are, have commissioned a video that, um, is about to be released, um, through Place and Creative, uh, and that's being reviewed by the Community Outreach Subcommittee. Uh, we are supplying a grant writer, um, to write the current community compact grant, um, that I hope to, uh, I'll be talking about in just a couple of minutes. Uh, we also have some, a potential consulting money that we haven't designated yet on the Burke Twelve side that we can contribute to this cause. Um. And then the third bucket is the possible bucket, and this is, uh, what we discussed at the last meeting, which was going out and asking the towns for additional funds. As, uh, many of you probably know, um, given some ongoing conversation with the legislative delegation and sort of the tie-over funds from Burke Twelve, we decided to hold the asks to the towns, meaning giving them the option of moving forward with securing the funds, um, if they decided to, but if they had to have a special town meeting, um, offering them the option of holding on that until we had a better sense of whether we had additional funding streams. We discussed rural aid at the last meeting, which we declined to act on. Um, we, I, I had actually did the slideshow, um, last night, and the Bar Ed Visioning money, a $50,000 ask, I told, uh, I have on the slide that we're waiting, we actually found it this morning, that we did actually win that grant. So we have $50,000 to contribute, uh, towards the Ed Visioning work. Um, which again, I'll hit in a minute. I'm sorry, I haven't given anyone a heads up. I think the only person I had a a minute to email today was, and that was Lucy. So that's really good news for the board. Um, and then we are in, uh, conversations with our delegation about possible asks through the supplemental budget, um, and we're hoping to have a meeting with them um, in the next, um, week to two, um, to sort of mobilize the delegation as a block uh, to go after some funds to support the work. And then obviously, we're writing a community compact grant, which is due in mid-October, and, um, my suggestion is that we ask for the full $150,000, which is represented on the next slide, and you all saw this slide. This has not changed from the last meeting. This was the three, six, and twelve-month projection, starting on July one, um, all the way through, and what I had sort of sketched out for you all was the idea that, um, was the, was the argument, we needed about $150,000 to carry us through the year. Um, and so this slide is really for reference, uh, for you all, and why we'll be writing that community compact grant for 150,000.
Jake, can I just interrupt for a minute?
Well, me, yeah.
Can you go back to the prior slide?
Sure.
Um, because this, this letter that we sent out, uh, suggesting that the towns and school districts could put our original $15,000 request on hold. It, it was addressed to both the eight towns and the two school districts. So I'm, I'm not sure it's correct to say that the rural aid was declined. I understand Southern Berkshire uh, took a vote not to, uh, contribute 15,000, but I, I don't know that that has been put to a vote at Berkshire Hills. Maybe Peter Dillon or Steve Bannon can can clarify on that.
The, the quick Berkshire Hills thing is, uh, they, they've uh, had the old vote to allocate up to what I believe was $60,000, continued upon Berkshire, or Berkshire doing the same. Um, and, uh, and then we got your letter, so we've not taken any additional action. And I don't think, actually, at our last meeting, we knew that Southern Berkshire had taken uh, any action, but, but we could have did it at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Jake.
No, I think Jane has her hand up also.
Oh, Jane, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to clarify, the vo- vote from Southern Berkshire was not to contribute, excuse me, contribute at this time. It was a not an outright rejection. I think people were not clear on that, because there were too many unknowns about our expenses and the actual amount of money that we were gonna be getting. Thank you.
Okay, and do you now know the amount of money that you're getting?
Uh, I don't think so, and we also don't know these new expenses that arose, uh, at the end of this month, early October, we should have a better idea.
Lucy, just to clarify, the, the rural aid amounts are known.
There.
Yeah, do, do we have those two numbers?
I, I've seen them. I, I don't remember them off the top of my head.
I think I know.
Oh, Beth, could you give the? Great.
Um, I think, uh, ours are, I think ours was around 101,000. I don't have the exact, and I believe Peter, um, yours was around 143,000 plus.
Yeah, i- i- and now that you're mentioning it, I, I think ours might be 150, and maybe yours is 105, but, but I, I'll look it up as we're talking.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, sorry to interrupt, Jake. Go ahead.
No, no, it was a good interruption, because I think the first two, um, bullets under the last section are probably a little bit misleading. I, I think we had a discussion about going specifically after rural aid, but I think the decision was obviously to ask the eight towns and the two committees contribute $15,000 through whatever source they had, whether that was rural aid, um, ARPA funds, or whatever else. So. So sorry for any confusion. Um, so again, you've seen this slide, um, and then I just wanted to sort of talk about immediate needs. Uh, and this is what I ca- would call a three-month budget. Um, and so obviously, um, my pay, your project managers' pay, um, admin support, which is Christine, uh, continuing to work with Abrahams, the Abrahams Group. We're doing a lot of fiscal analysis with the finance subcommittee. We need to keep the Abrahams engaged. It's a big part of the regional agreement work. Um, the OPEB study, which, um, I, I guess now would be a good time and any to talk about that, right?
Okay.
Lucy?
Yep.
So one of the things that's come up in, in the finance subcommittee and in the thinking about the regional agreement is the need to talk about, um, historical or, um, sort of the, the, uh, other post-employee, um, benefit liabilities. And so, um, in talking with folks, um, on the subcommittee, and then also with the Abrahams Group, um, the recommendation was that we actually, um, work with an actuarial firm to literally do the, the math, the study, to figure out, um, uh, what that would look like, and different ways to sort of think about how those liabilities would play out, um, um, from where we are now with two districts and eight towns, five and three, two and eight-town region, um, and that would include liabilities that, uh, towns own or districts own with employees who are retired out of the district already. Um, employees who would end up splitting service between a dis- um, you know, the existing districts and potentially emerged district, and then employees who would be hired within the new merged district. So, um, I have a, um, proposal from, um, a fellow Parker Elmore, who most everyone knows in the state. He does a lot of actual, or actuarial work with the districts, uh, for $8,500. I've had three or four conversations with him. I have a proposal, and I would suggest that we move forward with this because it's a needed, uh, set of data for the regional agreement and for understanding the fiscal implications of emerged district. So, um, in addition to this, um, we do have, um, Russell Dupre, who's offering law services, and I'm realizing, put it, uh, put him on here, because I think I had him on the last slide, but all tallied, it's about $34,000, $35,000. We have 21,000 in hand on the town side, and I believe we can mobilize the balance, the 14,000 from Burke Twelve. So this is sort of a very simplified three-month budget. Um, in the event that, um, we don't secure funds through the legislative delegation or the community compact grant, um, in the next thirty to ninety days. So I guess I can stop there, pause, and um, answer any clarifying questions.
What, when do you want to get the OPEB study done, and do we need to take a vote on that tonight?
Uh, well, I mean, certainly you could go to project management and be voted there, and that might be better, because then they could look at the proposal a little bit more close, closely, and if they wanted to talk to Parker, they could.
Okay, let's do that then. Yep.
On to the plan. Then I did want to point out that, um, if you go to the last slide, again, I, I don't want to get too far out here, and because I know we have a lot of things to cover tonight, is we did on this Ed Visioning section here have money marked out in the big budget for Ed Visioning work. Um, and so now with the award from Bar, we will have this 50,000 covered. But what we don't have allocated yet is a work for pre-K through four, five through eight, or CBTE, and that would be paying lead teachers and so, um, providing some sort of support for these steering committees to work. Right? Any other questions?
Yep.
Yes, no?
Go ahead, Bonnie.
Um, Mike, on the OPEB study, I, I just went by it, but there is a formal proposal that we could look at?
Yes.
Okay. And were there, you selected them to submit the proposal because of knowing their reputation?
Yeah, yes. Uh, basically, it was talking with folks who work in this space in the state and, um, and then ultimately doing a couple of conversations with this group, and, um, to be honest with you, Bonnie, um, we have used them in central Berkshire, and so um, I had some experience.
Okay.
You know, getting, um, estimates from them and their work product, so.
And shouldn't that go to finance? Our finance subcommittee?
It, it was raised at the last finance subcommittee, although the the proposal was not, I did not have the proposal on hand at that time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Patrick?
Yeah, are you sure you don't want a motion to just approve this three-month budget? Like, we trust your judgment, Jake, or at least I do.
I'll defer to Lucy on that one.
Um. Well, I, I, I think everything but the OPEB study has already been approved. Um. I think, I think it makes sense for it to go to project management, um, just so that people can take a look at the proposal. I mean, we could have a motion just to approve the dollars. Is that what you're thinking, Patrick? And then, um, that's subject to approval of the OPEB consultant by project management?
Yes.
Okay, is that your motion?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Who, who was that? Don?
I second.
Okay, Don, okay. Uh, any discussion? All right, roll call though. Charlie?
Yes.
George?
Obstand.
Uh, Danelle?
No.
Uh, Deb?
Yes.
Peter Taylor?
Yes.
Steve Bannon?
Yes.
John Silbert?
Yes.
Don Coburn?
Yes.
Laura Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jane Burke?
Yes.
Tara White? Tara?
Yes.
Susan Smith?
Yes.
Bonnie Silvers?
Yes.
Nadine Haver?
Yes.
Colin Smith?
Yes.
Patrick White?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Uh, Andy?
Hi.
Marie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, thank you, Patrick. All right, um. Any update on advocacy? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so advocacy, just, uh, we continue to do outreach and connections with the Department of Ed, Michelle Griffin and Christine Lynch, who are out of the Office of Regionalization. We connected with the six town, um, uh, I think they're called the Six-Town Partnership. Um, it's Gil, Montague, um, and a few other towns uh, that are working in parallel, just to sort of exchange, um, experiences, um, and obviously, we wanted to commiserate on the fact that regionalization money had not been provided by the state, and, um, we're working with sort of partnered legislative delegates, theirs and ours, to really lean in um, to the state to see if we can, um, access some of that surplus money to support efforts, um, in both of our communities. Um, we do have a planned, um, not yet scheduled, but planned meeting with, um, Rep Pignotelli, um, Rep Mark, um, Rep, um, Farley Bouvier, and hopefully Rep Barrett. Um, as you all know, Senator Hines has resigned and started a new job. He was a key ally, and so we've done some really quick rallying to engage our other delegates, really to keep this project and our work, um, uh, at the top of their list, um, for things that we need their ongoing support for.
Yeah, can I just add something there, Jake? Um, we did lose a key ally with Senator Hines, um, moving on, and so I would urge uh, all of those who want to urge the state to support this work to individually write, uh, our representative, uh, Smitty Pignotelli, and tell him that. Um, because, uh, we, we are gonna need to push harder than, than we would have had to have pushed had Senator Hines still been in his seat. So I'd ask everyone to uh, send an email off to Representative Pignotelli, asking him to do what he can to get the state support in place.
Great, thank you. So, um. Anyway, so we continue to sort of do that work, and, um, and I think, uh, they're gonna be key allies, and hopefully, in the work forward, uh, fourth bullet down is community compact grant. I've already mentioned that, uh, at least by the state. Fourth fall down is community compact grant. I've already mentioned that, at least by the state, there's different parts of the community compact grant as one is regionalization. As folks on the call who are school committee members and or town officials know that both municipalities and school departments or LEAs can apply for these grants. So our intent is to apply for the community compact to support this particular board. I'll be likely just using the budget, which we've already approved, the hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget with the, the work areas, the task areas outlined, as I've outlined to the board. It won't be anything different. It won't be anything new. It just will be saying, hey, we're doing this work and we'd like you to support us fiscally. I think the challenge with this particular grant, and some of you have maybe written this grant before, I know, I know Peter has for sure, is that they, they want a very tangible product. So let's say, for example, you wanted to combine food service operations in two districts. Your deliverable would be that that's done at the end of the grant, but that the money would be used to help execute that. So you know, given the fact that our product really is a planning process and moving towards potentially a vote, it'll be interesting to see how it's received. So just want to let you know that that's happening. I'll have more details for project management, Lucy. I meet with a grant writer, I think on Friday again. So we'll just keep, we're just trying to hustle to get money to support this work. That's really the bottom line in all this. And then finally, we were asked to participate in the combined MASE, MAS, November convening. And so a couple of us are going to be traveling down, I believe Lucy, myself, and then a couple of folks from Burke twelve, just to talk about our work. Both in this board, but also more broadly in the Burke twelve effort. So we were excited to be invited to do that work, make those presentations.
Lucy, just one thing, I looked up the numbers, the the Southern Berkshire Rural Aid is a hundred and one thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and fifty one cents. And the Berkshire Hills is a hundred and fifty four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and four cents.
So Beth, you are very close.
So charging ahead, we're just going to do quick subcommittee updates based on the project task areas. We have five task areas we're working in. Many outreach engagement, ed visioning, regional agreement, additional analysis, which is specifically transportation right now, and then advocacy, which you already touched on. I would just ask the chairs if they're interested to jump in, but I've got a slide on each. So right now, so John Dilver is our Chair of Operations. We had a meeting, John, Lucy and myself to with Rich Labrie from Alliance to review a first draft of the transportation study. Based on our close reading of that, we've asked Rich to go back and do a little bit more analysis on a couple of slightly modified scenarios. And he's doing that willingly and we're hoping to get an updated draft towards the middle of October and then hopefully bring that to the operations subcommittee, ultimate full board towards the end of the month. John, happy to have you jump in if you want to add anything.
Uh, no, you stole my thunder. That's fine. But that is correct. We reviewed the initial draft and we're asking for some more information than another scenario. But I think it was a, it was a positive look and and we're looking forward to the revisions.
Thank you. I feel like I'm moving fast today just because I know we have a heavy agenda. Ed quality met and Deb, happy to have you jump in, but we're working on continue to sort of mobilize the ed visioning working groups, which are, whoops, which are basically organized by grade span, pre K through four, middle grades, high school and CBT E. Again, the idea here is to bring cross district groups together to learn more about each other and to be, begin to sort of vision how any town effort would manifest at the various grade spans, recognizing that pre K through four middle grades really don't change. The buildings continue to operate as they currently are. And then in the high school, we sort of tackle that in two buckets. Sort of the academic co-curricular program and then specific CBT E and career pathway work. We're right now, let's see if I had the slide here. We've organized the, the idea behind how we're going to tackle ed visioning is having a steering committee of somewhere between ten and sixteen people. Again, cross district equal membership from each district. And then those groups will work on some of the heavier lifting and then bring together a larger open convening that would involve more community members, faculty staff and folks who maybe can't commit the time to the steering committee. We did present an overview of RSDP to the two districts. And then as a, as I promised, during those presentations, we followed up with a survey to the faculty staff, which was sent out from both superintendents a few times. We got twenty seven responses. And we asked very specific questions about whether they were interested in follow up informational sessions. And then secondarily, whether they're interested in participating in some shape or form on the ed visioning work. And so we do have a few individuals who express interest in serving the steering committee leaders, but we need obviously more participants to launch these steering committees. And I think that's going to be even more important now that we have potentially a fifty thousand dollar grant from the bar. Not potentially, we have a grant from the Bar Foundation to support the nine through twelve work. So I think securing and completing these steering committees, getting populated with willing volunteers or participants is going to be important. So Deb, I know we have a couple of hands raised and and I also want to make sure I didn't miss anything, Deb. A really quick sprint over a really big body of work there.
I just was going to add that we did broach the subject of special education and are still trying to figure out what the best who, who to convene and what the best way to do that is to make sure that it's getting the attention it needs. That's all I wanted to add. Otherwise, I think you did fine. Go ahead and take the questions. That's more important.
Raised hands?
Yep. Laura and Jane?
Hi, I'm just curious if you get to a point where you're really struggling to get particularly teachers to participate in those work, is there any option? Or is it even okay to offer stipends to get people on board?
Yeah, I mean, that the ideal scenario with professional development outside of ours is always to pay people, right? Now I'm a big advocate for that. You know, obviously we have a pretty limited budget. And so that's the, that's the, the limiting variable, right? So what we did build in, what we did bake into the plan was were stipends for the steering committee leaders. And so we did build that in. What we didn't build in was anything for just participants. So that may be something we can revisit. Last year, Burke twelve, we ran study groups across six areas and we had fifteen to twenty people on each and we didn't pay them much. I think we gave them a two hundred dollar honorarium. It was just more of a token. So we could certainly revisit that and see if that's, you know, at the moment, it's not in the budget, but maybe if we were to you know, get some additional funds, it could be considered.
Jane? Jane, you have your hand up?
Sorry, I was on mute. I'm sorry, I can't do video with, with this computer. I think our teachers are maxed out with wonderful projects that they're doing in their own districts. And my concern is that we wanted the best and brightest of the teachers who could contribute to this process and that by, I would hate for people to be coming on just for the stipend. And I also think the people should know that the fifty dollars in ed visioning that's coming from Barr is going to, to mostly to two consultants to help with this work. And there isn't anything in that amount of money to offer to, to teachers. And I, I am extremely concerned that we really get good participation here.
Yep, I would completely agree with you. So if anyone has any ideas on how to encourage people to participate, I am all ears. I know Peter and Beth continue to send things out on our behalf. I appreciate that. If you have, you want to nudge or encourage, feel free to, because we do need some folks to think about that. I'm hoping once we get the leaders on board, maybe they could also be used to encourage peers to participate. So you know, I'm not in your school, so I, 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 I really rely on you all to help identify those folks to, to participate.
Okay, Bonnie, and then we're going to move on to finance. Oh, Colin, you've got your hand up too. Okay.
Jake, I don't, I don't think, you know, the, a stipend in this case will really make much of a difference. From what I'm hearing is that trying to do a quality job in the amount of time. And I know that we have a timeframe for the people who considered it, it just became, I can't do another thing, even though some of the people are really good. Who would want, want to do it? And I don't know if there's a way to rethink how we do it, because I would totally agree with what was said by Laura and Jane. We want the quality of that input, because otherwise we're just going to get, you know, knocked around for saying we didn't get the input. So I don't know if you could figure a magic way. But I, I think the reluctance come from what was said, maxed out and the amount of time that's needed in order to produce this in that short period of time.
Okay, well, maybe we can explore scheduling it in a, in a different chunk of time. If there are good, interested people who step forward and say, I'd like to do it. I can't do it in October, November, but I could do it in January, February. I mean, if, if there are people who identify as interested, but it's the months of participation that is the, the deal breaker, then maybe we can adjust that. What do you think, Jake?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, at this point, we don't have full steering committee. So certainly we've, on our side, we have to be flexible, because without participants, we can't move forward. So if that means adjusting the timeline, that's fine.
Jake, may I ask a follow up to you? Is it at all possible to do something like a couple of Saturday full day workshops?
Yeah, that, I mean, sort of the game plan was to have the steering committee do a lot of that pre-work to set up the Saturday convening.
Right.
So the idea behind the Saturday convening was you pull people in for three or four hours who otherwise couldn't invest the time to be a steering committee member, which would require, I don't know, six meetings or so to do that prep work. So I'm trying to be as inclusive as possible, but we do need a core team to sort of dig into that initial work that would then set up that convening. But I would suggest that, you know, we have a, our next meeting is on the seventeenth and you know, Deb and I have not done agenda setting yet, but we certainly at that point will need to talk about where we are with steering committees. And I would also think that we could even invite the consultants in to, um, talk about how they're going to tackle the nine through twelve.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Alan?
I was just going to comment on the fact that, you know, that in recently, there's been talk about the, the frustration of lack of participation and we want this participation, which we're talking right now about. Is it reasonable for the superintendents or the leaders of the two school districts to reach out to some of these people that are, that, that we've identified or whoever's identified as the people that, that we want to hear from and personally ask them. It's different than receiving an email or a group email and personally get asked to do it. And at that time, ask them if there's a timeframe issue or what, what, what whoever was talking about a different, you know, doing it during the, during later in the year or whatever, but personally asking them and saying, we really want your, 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 your viewpoint in this and to participate in this. And this is how much time we have. I think that might make a difference than just an email, but we got to do something different because it's not working.
You know, I, I think that's well said and I agree. And then at some point we'll get whatever number of people we have and then we should, should see where we land with that number of people.
Makes sense. All right.
Okay, finance, Jake?
Yeah, just, I already did the Bar Foundation. Actually, I had community outreach first. Did you want to do an update, Lucy, real quick? And just, we did send the September update, update number two around. But the community outreach group is meeting about every two weeks. And so lots of thinking around social media, impending youth forum, additional community groups. So, but I encourage folks to distribute that update, which was sent to you all, I think, within the last two days. And then finance subcommittee met. This is important work. Appreciate Nadine and the members helping to really work collaborative with Matt Abrahams and myself around assessment methodologies, which you're going to start to see pieces of in the regional agreement. Although we won't be really addressing those today. They are, there's some very basics sketched out in one of the worksheets, but we have another meeting scheduled. We got some great input from the you know, finance subcommittee members around additional questions they wanted. And so right now we're focused on operational methodologies and slicing and dicing that a couple of different ways. We'll also be looking at capital. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the OPEB liabilities, the legacy liabilities that have got to be, you know, addressed. So, yeah, there's Parker right there and it's a Odyssey Advisors is his group. Folks wanted to look that up and do a little intel. And then Nadine, our next meeting is the twelfth and you're welcome to, I don't know if you have anything else you want to throw in?
No, you did great. Then I was just going to say the next meeting is the twelfth and we welcome everyone to participate for sure.
Good work. So that's pretty much the subcommittees, Lucy. So I think we're
So good. So we're a little bit behind, maybe ten minutes, but still have a good chunk of time to devote to this item six, which is the introduction of a draft eight town regional school district agreement. And I'm going to turn the floor over primarily to Jake and Russell, but I would just like to encourage people and I saw a lot of this happening just organically at the last finance subcommittee meeting. And I thought it was really wonderful, actually, and very healthy that people were thinking about assessment methodologies. Not necessarily from the perspective of the town they represent, but from, and the district they represent, but from the perspective of other towns and the other district. And Colin, when he spoke, was thinking about how Great Barrington, Stockbridge and West Stockbridge might react to an assessment option. And Patrick, when he spoke, was thinking about how Southern Berkshire might react to a particular assessment methodology. And I was really encouraged by that, because I think that's what we need to be doing as we go into these brainstorming sessions. And that's all today is. It's an initial brainstorming session. We're going to have a number of those before we start really debating and voting and trying to make decisions. We need to think about how the other towns might perceive or receive a particular proposed solution. So I just encourage people to not only think about that, but to articulate it. When you state your position, maybe begin by stating what you imagine. Let's say I might imagine the town of Stockbridge to think about a particular proposal rather than the town of Alford and Southern Berkshire Regional School District. So that's all I have to say as an introduction. And Jake, maybe you can lead off and then we'll turn it over to Russell.
Yep. So just real quickly, the regional agreement work began, as members know, in last fiscal year, when we contracted with Mass Association of Regional Schools to help us do some context setting work. That work included advising on parts of a regional agreement, the order, different ways to think about particular elements of a regional agreement with specific attention to assessment methodology and governance. They talked us through needed documentation for a regional agreement and what the Department of Ed process was for approving. And then they provided some supporting documents on a variety of topics from school choice to school councils. Ultimately, what they delivered to us was a boilerplate draft agreement, which reflected all the things which are on the upper list, sort of the contemporary order of a regional agreement, but also each of the district's current approaches, as well as potential alternative approaches, not everything. But several things that Mars provided based on their experience doing this sort of work with other districts. We then took that agreement and what Lucy, Russell, and I have been doing for the last, I guess, I guess, month or so, right? Or how long has it been? Oops.
Few weeks.
Last year, right? Let me try that here, is drafting up a regional, you know, basically working with the version that Mars gave us and cleaning it up so that it was in a format that we thought was workable for the committee. And you all received that on Friday from me. And in that particular document, there are red highlighted sections, actually, red font, which identifies areas that we sort of describe as TBD, to be decided. And those are what we refer to as decision points that will need to be made by this board on what ultimately ends up in the agreement. And then in addition to that, we added some worksheets at the end of the document pertaining to some of the, you know, some of the more, I don't want to say challenging, but areas of the agreement that there may be some more discussion around how to best approach things like governance and assessment methodologies. So, you know, we do see a number of decision points. One of the things I put together was a decision point list based on the document, and that list has a variety of things on it, everything from what do you name the district? To how do you manage the transition process? But we all know for sure that governance, how we govern in terms of school committee composition, representation, who, how, how we vote, how folks get appointed, for how long? All that has to get baked in and figured out. In addition to that, the apportionment of cost, which is operation capital has all got, also has to be worked through, and not only worked through in terms of capital, but also considered from the perspective of capital that exists currently, capital debt, capital that could be incurred if the eight towns were to partner on the construction of new high school. Then capital that would be potentially needed somewhere down the road when buildings that are then operated by a new single district would need investment, capital investments. And so you have to like, think about capital in a couple of different ways. So, so today, I think, is really an introduction to the document. And I think the goal today is to maybe answer any questions that folks have on a general level. We're going to, I'm going to pass it over to Russell now, who's going to walk you through, you know, maybe just some of the regulatory considerations, requirements of regional agreements. And then I think we're going to tackle, maybe begin to have a discussion tonight, Lucy, on the first topic, which is that of governance, right?
Right.
So I guess with that as a setup, I'll pass it to Russell.
Okay. So most regional agreements in the state are very, very similar. So, and that's because about maybe 70, 80% of the agreement is really just required by law, required by Dusty. The commissioner approves all regional agreements. So a lot of the language in a regional agreement is something that we can tweak, but the gist of each section needs to be included in the agreement for a variety of reasons. So the real heavy lifting for a group like yours is there are certain sections of a regional agreement that are subject to change. And Lucy and Jake and I have been working on some of those sections. So we have a draft document where you can see we have different options that are available under different sections that can be reviewed by a committee such as this. So typically, we're going to look at the composition of the regional school committee. So the statute under chapter 71, section 14E, has five different ways that you can set up a regional school committee. Out of those, we have in the document included the most common ones, for example, because there's two or three of those five options, basically, very few districts set their composition up in that, in that method. There's also budget language, which we have to review, location of school commit, buildings, and the process to either open schools, closed schools. So things like that are the types of things that a body such as this would review. We will still review all the other sections of the agreement, just to make sure everybody understands why they're there and why they're needed. But we won't have to spend a lot of time on many of the sections in this agreement, other than getting everyone to understand why they're there. But there are some, you know, there's a number of places in the agreement where we need input as far as what the group thinks would be best for all your towns. Is there anything else I'm missing, Jake or Lucy that you want me to add?
No, I think that's good. I'm sure things will come up, Russell, as we work through it. Probably just two other points I want to make. One is that since we've sent this out on Friday, I appreciate that many of you have already done a close read on it. We've found a couple typos, omissions. And so, for example, the town population census not intentionally left out Stockbridge. And so I have an updated version, which you'll get after this meeting, which has just some corrections to it. So I appreciate those who, members who are reading closely. And then just the other point I want to make, and I I think I, people know this, but just in case, ultimately, the regional agreement is what the board will vote to support or not. And if the regional agreement, once we have identified the elements that seem to make the most sense, if it goes to a vote and it's passed by this planning board, then it would be referred to the towns for a vote. And that's really what we're acting on as a body and what the towns would act on, or what the voters would act on in terms of decision around whether this makes sense or not.
Yeah, the one other thing I wanted to add is that in the worksheet, worksheet two lays out various options, and these are just illustrations of possibilities. This is not an exhaustive list, right? So that, for example, option three, electing members with residency requirements and district-wide elections, which is the way both districts currently operate. You know, one example has 11 members and another one has, I don't know, maybe 11 as well, but it could be 13, right? Or it could be nine, or it could be 15. We, we didn't list out every conceivable option that would be impossible to do. These are illustrations of the various options that are permitted by law. I just wanted to be clear about that. There's nothing magic about the number 11. It's a, it's perhaps a reasonable number. But there could be other numbers. It's not dictated by statute, the number of school committee members you must have on a school committee. And did I get that right, Russell?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to open it up for questions. Of Russell or Jake, Jane, and then Bonnie.
All right. I just had a procedural question, because that we have to pass, the full board has to pass the regional agreement. Would we be deciding whether we have to come to consensus where we all support it? Or are you thinking a simple majority or two thirds is adequate? I, I, I would like to see a unanimous support that we've been out to our communities and vetted it with them so that we have a good sense of how our towns are going to react. But that's just my, my thought.
Yeah. So majority vote controls on the planning board. It would be wonderful if we had unanimity behind the recommendation, but it's not required. Bonnie?
Thank you. Jake, maybe you can give some guidance here. When I read through the draft apropos what Lucy said, I kept on switching hats. So I say, well, you know, if I'm a school committee member, all right, from Sheffield, we get this and everything. And I go, well, if I'm a school committee member from Alford in one of those visions, it's like a third of a vote. And I know we're, we're just at the draft level, but my bigger concern is I'm a school committee member on this board, and so many of these decisions seem to incredibly impact the towns. So if you're looking and saying in there, it talks about you go to the nearest school. If this is changing constantly, how do towns plan their assessments? And not that I'm asking for an answer now, but if we, if we look at this, there's so, how are we going to get the, I know what we went through just to change Southern Berkshire's assessments. And I, I know Tara was involved in it. Nadine, you might have been. It took us two years. And I feel completely inadequate in terms of voting on something that I really believe so much is in the towns. The, the finance and the select boards' decision-making in order to make a decision that really is able to say, this is what's going to be the impact on the taxpayer. And Jake, I don't know if I'm making myself clear in this, but I came away feeling in some ways inadequate to handle this, the, the questions and the holes in the regional agreement.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how to respond, other than I can say that, you know, the assessment work is, you know, it's complicated and detailed, and there's a lot of different ways to to model it. And that's really what we're attempting to do at the finance subcommittee meeting is to use Matt with that subcommittee to sort of have a dialogue and go back and forth and, and look at it in different ways. At, at some point, I think you have to, that board, hopefully, a subcommittee will identify a couple of ways that seem more promising than others and bring that to the full board. I guess that's the best I can offer you is
But do you have, I'm sorry, do you have enough of an expertise there to be, I know what we have to face, like if New Marlboro changes with seven kids?
Right.
That could be a major impact. So I want to be sure that the people on finance or whomever is advising us has dealt with the issues that our town governance faces all the time.
Sure.
Can I, can I just jump in? Can I just jump in on that a little bit? And so Bonnie, as you know, we, we went back and forth as to whether we were going to have an advisory group made up primarily of select board and finance committee folks to do this preliminary work and then bring it to the planning board, or whether we were going to jump right in with the planning board. And when we went out to the towns and asked for them to make any recommendations, we, we got Julie from Sheffield. Thank you, Sheffield, and thank you, Julie. And the door is open always for other select board members and finance committee members to participate in these brainstorming sessions. The assessment methodology brainstorming is happening at finance subcommittee. That's not sort of on the agenda for tonight, but it's a fair question. But I do want to point out that we have on this 23-member board a lot of select board members. Right? So we've got Patrick from Stockbridge, we've got Tara from New Marlboro, et cetera, et cetera. And so we do have that representation here. And, and we have Chuck, thank you for coming into my view from Alford. We do have that, and George from Egremont, et cetera. We do have that representation here. And we are going to be informed by the views of those town representatives. Julie, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment on Bonnie's note about, well, you know, how do, how do schools plan when different students are moving from different schools or however that works? And part of the way Southern Berkshire was able to help making, you know, to alleviate big spikes was that notion of a rolling average, you know, at first it was student enrollment, you know, now it's the rolling on the statutory formula or whatever. But that, the rolling averages, I, I'm looking forward to seeing some modeling with that incorporated and just see how will that impact? You know, I, we kind of know how it works in Southern Berkshire, but if we were to apply it to eight towns, what happens in Great Barrington to that? What happens in Stockbridge? How does that work? It would be really interesting to see that.
Thank you. You answered, you know, one of the issues, because that was, took us over two years of great minds coming together for that. And now we don't want to lose that process in making this decision.
No, Bonnie, that was one of my, you know, in talking to Nadine about trying to become a part of this, it's like, yes, I sat in some of those torturous meetings with Tara and others. So I recall how that worked, and we don't want to do that again. So let's model it. Let's see what works and, and works best for everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Thanks, Bonnie. John?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Lucy said and also Bonnie. So Charlie and I were also in those negotiations to restate the regional agreement almost 20 years ago, and Julie, you know, sure, torturous was part of it. We were in a cinder block room together for months at a time without any air conditioning. But I think, actually, it was a very extremely productive bunch of meetings, and, and much of that talent is still here. So I, I, I just want to reiterate what Lucy says, that we really do have the, the expertise here today.
I'll second what John just said.
Thank you both.
And I'll joke and take back the word torturous.
I think I was in that cinder block room too. 20 years ago. Colin?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I think we all have to trust the process here, because all of us have talents. And they're not all the same talents. We all, you know, have different expertise and things like that. And Bonnie, that, that rolling average and the the, the details of the formula and what we've gone through in the past was briefly discussed in the finance, the last finance committee meeting. That's what That's what, what Lucy was talking about. We were all sort of looking at it from just different perspectives. So it is happening and, and there are finance committee members from towns here. There's select board members, there's just smart finance people on, on our group and education people. And I, I trust the process. There's lots of people that know a lot of stuff here. So I, I think we'll get there.
Good, thanks.
Thanks Colin. Okay, well, do we want to dig in on school committee governance and maybe go around the room and get initial thoughts on school committee size? And this is without committing to a position. This is really a brain, initial brainstorming session. School committee size, you know, district-wide voting versus town voting, which would require weighted votes. Appointment method, I, I remember when we had that at Southern Berkshire. That wasn't very popular, but we can talk about that again. I just, I'd just like people, everyone really, to weigh in on what their initial thoughts are on school committee composition and how school committee members should be elected and/or appointed. Peter Taylor, why don't you lead us off?
I'm not sure if I'm gonna answer your question. I'm more curious on the front end of this around school committee size and maybe even voting, to really hear some reflections from Beth and Peter. I think the partnership between the school board and the superintendent is so important for the success of the district. I'm curious what their observations are on some questions around governance, given their vantage point of superintendents.
Okay, Peter and Beth, are you willing to weigh in?
Always. That's, that's what we do. Beth, do you wanna go first or do you want me to go first?
You can go if you have a prepared.
Yeah, no, I do. I mean, I, I looked at, I, I actually like 3A. It's, it's fairly similar, at least to what Berkshire Hills does. And I think it's close to what Southern Berkshire does. 11 is not much bigger than 10, and it's imagine, imagine manageable number. That, that actually have a 10-member school committee is odd. You'd think we'd have more ties than we do. And for some reason, we don't. But I like the 11. And, and I like avoiding the crazy math of the weighted votes all the time. It's, it's hard. I mean, you might have to hire somebody just to do the weighted. Hard enough to run a meeting yet to, to do that, that kind of. I mean, you could have it set up in a laptop, but, but it, it just seems like a distraction to, to have to do the, the weighted votes. I, I'm not opposed to, to 3B with the, with the three at-large members. And it might get you to the same place, but, but my, my slight preference is, is 3A. And I think anything more than about 12 or 13 members starts getting too challenging because one of the superintendent's jobs is to try to connect with members individually. And if it starts being like a, a football team instead of a baseball team in size, right? Offense and defense, it's unwieldy.
Okay, before, before we go to Beth, just for the benefit of the attendees who may not have this worksheet in front of them. Option 3A would be electing members with residency requirements in district-wide elections to be held at the biennial state elections. So that's what we have currently in both Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire. So the example given in 3A is, as Peter said, 11 members, three members from Great Barrington, two members from Sheffield, and every other town having one member, and that adds up to 11. Beth?
So it's kind of interesting because this is a smaller district than the district I worked in before. But I often joke with Tom Scott at the Superintendent's Association for having like a one-to-one school committee member and group of students in the district. So it is a, it is a big school committee in comparison to, you know, the usual size in Western Mass Prior, which was about seven members. However, you know, I think it's probably warranted, obviously, with the number of, of towns that we are talking about. So, you know, one more member for me or a couple more members is, is not an issue. What I do particularly love about what we do out here is that the school committee members are representing all the towns. They get voted by all the towns. That was not the case in the district that I worked at before, and it was weighted. And Wilbraham was much larger than Hamden, and, and it just caused all sorts of issues. So I think it's a, it's a much truer model when, when you're being elected by all five or all eight community members to, to represent them. I think that's really what the definition of a regional school district is.
Thank you. It's really helpful to get the perspective of other school districts and your experience with size. Don?
I have a couple of questions. One, why was appointment of members not satisfactory? And who did the appointment?
The select boards did the appointment. And now I wanna, I wanna stick to my role that I, I'm not going to guess at the motivation or intention of others. But what I heard, when we had that in place for a short period of time, it was actually the settlement that was agreed to following litigation about the Southern Berkshire Regional School District's school committee composition. It was the compromise and it, it wasn't popular because I think people felt that the select boards had too much control over how school committee members voted. Because the school committee members were appointed by select boards and the thought was they were therefore in some sense beholden to the select boards of the five-member towns, and there wasn't enough independent thinking going on. That's what I heard was the root of the dissatisfaction. And after some number of years with appointed system, and I remember Catherine Miller, and I think maybe even Dennis Sears spearheaded the change to having district-wide voting for all of the school committee members, which also satisfied the one person, one vote mandate.
Okay, now I have one other comment. It's part driven by your comment that we should look at this from other points of view of other towns. I'm from Monterey. My question is, or is Great Barrington, Sheffield and Stockbridge going to be unduly upset with having less of a say than they have in their present district? This, this group of 11 with these votes makes each of those towns less powerful than they are in their present region? Is that gonna be a problem is my question? Otherwise, I like it. Thank you.
Okay, well, it's a good question. It's an excellent question and good for discussion. Patrick, why don't you lead off and then Nadine and then Jane?
Well, first of all, I think at a practical level, I understand it's basically one vote for the smaller towns and two or three votes for the larger town. I get that. For people looking at the draft of the regional agreement that was selected, circulated, Stockbridge has a census population in 2020. I believe it was 2018. So, you know, the, the, to, to Don's point, I mean, obviously, you know, you're looking at four times the population of Alford and the same number of school committee members. I would also point out, and I know this isn't really on the agenda for tonight, but between Great Barrington and Stockbridge, I believe we're being asked to fund 80 or 85% of the cost of the new schools or 80% anyway, maybe 75. I haven't done the math. It just seems like a tremendous ask for a relatively small say in the way the governance is working. Now, having said that, I understand why a 20 or 30-member board doesn't make sense, which would allow you to proportion more closely related to populations. But it sort of seems from Stockbridge's perspective that we're at the high end of the ask financially and at the high end of the one person, I mean, one vote only in terms of population and influence in how the district runs.
And does the fact that it's district-wide voting as opposed to, you know, each town gets to vote for its own representative? Does that provide any comfort or is that a counterbalance at all to the concern that Stockbridge only has one? Because in fact, Stockbridge and all the towns get to vote for all the representatives.
Why is that better?
Well, you know, theoretically, it's better if, and this is a big if, and it doesn't happen very often. School committee elections are contested, right? So if there were a choice, right, if, if there were three people running for the Alford position with different views and Stockbridge residents could choose among those three, the, the person they think has, has the views best aligned with the interest of Stockbridge residents, it makes a difference. If, as, as is often the case, you know, we're lucky to get anyone to run. I mean, I know that's a problem in Great Barrington now, and it's been a problem in Sheffield. And it's been a problem in all the towns. We don't really have contested elections for school committee spots. In that case, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference, right? If it's district-wide voting or not, because there's only one selection possible.
Lucy, I'll tell you, I'm looking at my screen now and I've got, what, six, 30 names, 30 names in front of me. I have a big monitor. And I think I knew two or three of you in total before I got on this board. I, I'm pretty engaged in my town. And I had never heard any of the selectmen in most of these towns, and probably they didn't know many about many of the selectmen in Stockbridge. And, and I wonder if I'm really qualified to vote on who the best representative for Alford is, let alone like, you know, Great Barrington, which is a sister town in the district. I, I, I think that voters at best are engaged in the town they're in. So I, I just, you know, I, I, I'm only understanding now what the district-wide voting might entail, and I'm just not sure. You know, I also wonder if it, if it, it doesn't lend itself to a blocks of candidates who might run and promote themselves based on a specific platform. Like, but it, maybe an unintended consequence could be sort of, you know, better funded blocks, you know, serving of that, you know, I, I don't know. I gotta think about it. Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Nadine?
I very much like this first option. I think district-wide voting is important. And it took me a while to sort of understand how Southern Berkshire School Committee members work. You know, if you think, okay, Sheffield has four people serving on that committee, then Sheffield gets preferential treatment. I don't really think that takes place at all. I truly believe that every member elected on the Southern Berkshire School Committee represents every student, no matter what town they come from. And I see Bonnie shaking her head yes. And it took me a little bit of time, you know, watching how the school committee works, that they really aren't influenced by the individual towns. They do come to our town. Bonnie does come to our town and share what's going on with the school committee. Because she, she's a representative from Sheffield. But I certainly don't think that she votes or any Sheffield representative votes some particular way because a selectman tells them, you know, geez, we're, we're, we're crushed under the budget. Please help us. We just, we tell them that ourselves. And, you know, I, I truly believe that, that our school committee currently represents all of the children in the district. And I think that as a board, that's the approach we need to be thinking about, is that this new school committee is going to represent every child in every town. So I don't really think it matters whether we each have one vote or whether Barrington gets three and Sheffield gets two and everybody else gets one. I, I, if we, if, if we want equality, then we all could have one representative. And, and the only issue there is that it would then be an even number, which we think probably is best if it's odd. I think that we just have to keep in mind that we're, this new school committee is going to work the same way the two current school committees do. They represent every child in every town.
I muted myself. Bonnie, thank you Nadine. Bonnie, John, and then Jane.
I, I just really want to second, Nadine said it perfectly. One of the educations, someone who's not here, Dennis Sears, over the years has educated all of us. You don't represent Sheffield. You represent all five towns. And Nadine said it, when Jeffrey Blaugrind may come from the smallest of our towns, his, his view is as important as anyone else in all of our discussions. And I think that's been a critical way that we have been brought up to look at our role on, on the, on the school committee. And I like 3A because as I think it was, John brought up, someone brought up, there's no other influence. If you can't get people to run, well, we've had a number of times in Sheffield where we've had a number of people running and you do what you need to do. I like the fact that it's independent. And I agree with what Peter Dillon said about it. My, my sense is 3A makes the most sense. And also, given my experience on Southern Berkshire Regional School Committee, I don't feel in any way, if, you know, West Stockbridge only has one vote, that they count less on this new school committee. I mean, these are, each individual is who will count on our new school committee.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I just wanna third, third this. Having made that change in Southern Berkshire, I actually think that the idea that district-wide elections would encourage people to run on a platform is exactly what we want. We want people to come to us with their educational views and to convince us that they have great ideas. And so rather than running, representing your town, you are running for the entire district. And I think everyone should vote for everyone. So in terms of, in terms of getting people to run, I think also, obviously, if it's elected, people are gonna be encouraged to run if they wanna have a say in what happens, and they're gonna have to explain their, their value to the voters when they, when they run for it. So I, I, I just wanna reiterate that I think it, it works very, very well.
Thank you. Jane, and then Andy.
I just wanna point out that this 11 gives Southern Berkshire six votes and Berkshire Hills five votes. And I think the structure should be such that possibly equal votes for equal, for each district. Because in this situation, say there's an interest in closing New uh, say there's an interest in closing the Marlborough School, uh, which I'm sure is going to come up at some point. Then Southern Berkshire, who loves the little school, uh, no matter how much they want to serve everybody, I don't think that you can take away uh, their, their interest in keeping the school. And I don't think that's fair to Berkshire Hills, that we would have one more. Uh, the same way if Berkshire Hills continues with their, what they're doing with their high school philosophy, and there's a vote on uh, adopting that, I wouldn't want to see Berkshire Hills have one more vote than Southern Berkshire. I think even if everybody has the best intentions of caring about the kids, there are issues that are going to, there's going to be disagreements. So I would like to see it set up um, an equal number of votes uh, for both sides, so we, we don't feel like somebody can make a decision uh, from one district or the other. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Jane. Um, I do think if we're, if we're talking about a new eight-town district, at some point, we need to move away from one district versus the other district, right?
Oh, come on Lucy, I was gonna say that.
I'm sorry, Andy, you go.
Jeez, take it away from me.
Sorry.
No, I, I agree with that, the, the idea that it, it, I mean, that certainly never the way I approached my work in the school district. I mean, you know, we were a, as a school board. But the, I mean, the main point that I wanted to step in and make is uh, talking to Patrick's points, is that there's another point where the town has a say, and that's the assessment, and that's the ATM, the annual town meeting. Uh, and eight annual town meetings, you're going to have to have some level of, you know, I mean, there's going to be fairness across, I mean, that's, that's a discussion. That's a year-long discussion to get to the point where you can get, and I haven't, I don't have a copy of this agreement. So I don't know what, I, that's okay, I, I just got here. So I, I mean, I get it. Uh, but the thing is, is that with the uh, the town meetings, you know, currently, you know, I mean, things go haywire if you have just two towns in Berkshire Hills drop, you know, not past the budget. So that is another point where um, decisions get made by the voters in each town. And, and so that, I mean, I, I guess that's kind of where I wanted to go. And also, I, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it with odd numbers are good. Um, and I think that everyone involved here should just approach it from we can work together. I mean, we're not, there's not two sides here, there are. It's South County. I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Andy. Jake, can you forward to Andy, the, the agreement? So he's got those. Do you have his email?
I'll find it.
Okay. Deb?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to respond. I like three A also. I, I'm not worried about um, district versus district, because I think, you know, in, in response to Jane, that we really, if we can't go into it as eight individual towns coming together, we're going to have a lot more problems than the five versus six votes per prior district. And that we really have to think about what an eight-town district looks like separate from what the two districts look like separately. Um, so I think, I think the distribution in three A is fair. I am a huge fan of, of all-town voting for all um, representatives. I think it's how you get the best people who are interested in the education of all the children. Uh, and that's really what we're looking for our school committee members. So that was what I wanted to respond to. Thanks.
Thanks. Steve, I saw your hand was up. Now it looks like it's down. Do you want to give us your thoughts?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. I, I just didn't want to be repetitive. I think three A is the way to go. And having some experience on school committees, I've never seen us Berkshire Hills, and I don't know Southern Berkshire, but I suspect it's the same way, take a vote that was based on town lines. It was always in the best interest of the, of the students. And um, as far as even or odd, I don't even know, that's an issue. Again, we've never uh, had a tie vote in my years on it that I remember. Um, and if, if we had a tie vote, it's when people have recused themselves or aren't at the meeting, and then you have eight members or six members, whatever you have. But I think three A is, is more insufficient. And I think everyone is correct that once we form one district, um, if the best people are elected, the Southern Berkshire, Berkshire Hills goes away, and it's one district, and we do what's best for the students. If we don't, we've got bigger problems than that.
Julie?
I'm just curious, Jake, I know you were at Central Berkshire, and they had seven towns. How big was that school committee?
I'm actually on the school committee.
Oh.
Currently.
Yeah.
Fifteen.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, so, and yeah, I can see why Peter would say he wants a, a baseball team, not a football team. No, I was just curious. It was like, it's like the closest district that I could think of with, you know, all, you know, seven towns, not eight, and how big? So interesting. All right. Thank you.
And if, if fifteen made the difference, I would work with fifteen. It just shouldn't be twenty.
Well, thirty-three. Yeah, or thirty-three. I agree. Yeah. Okay. Well, it's just something to think about. Thank you.
Okay, Peter Taylor, then I'm gonna wrap up this discussion. I think it's been really good um, initial discussion, but I do want to get to the Southern Berkshire communication. So Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll be real brief. Um, uh, I like three A as well. I like the proportional representation. I also like the district-wide voting. What I'd encourage us to think through though is the value of some at-large members. Because with the proportional representation, some of the smaller towns only get one representative. And there could be terrific candidates within those towns that can contribute a lot. And we would want to protect the opportunity for, you know, a smaller town to be able to yield to really great school board members. And so, you know, building off the idea that maybe eleven is ideal, but maybe fourteen or fifteen might be manageable. Could we build in some at-large seats to allow for that potential?
Okay, definitely something to consider. Anyone who really has a different point of view on three A, who'd like to to speak tonight before we wrap this up? Julie, your hand's still up. Is it meant to be? No? Okay. Okay, um, so thank you all. I thought that was a good beginning to our consideration of a regional agreement. Thank you, Russell, for participating. Any questions for Russell before I excuse him?
What happened now?
Well, we'll, we'll keep going with this um, at our next planning board meeting. Um, the assessment methodologies are going to be dug into at the finance subcommittee meeting. So I would encourage everyone uh, to attend those. Um, but that's, that's the next steps, Bonnie. Keep thinking about it, keep brainstorming. Um, send any questions you have to Jake. If they're legal questions, we can forward them on to Russell.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are, are we planning on setting another date via like a doodle poll or how are we doing that?
Yeah, we have the next date. Jake, do you have that date for our next planning board meeting?
It's October, it's October twenty-fifth. Is that right, Christine?
Yes, it's on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you. What time?
Same time.
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Okay, I have bargaining until six, but I could join at six o'clock.
That's fine. Yeah. That'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so you're excused, Russell. You can stay on if you like. So let's um, let's turn to the communication we received from the school committee. Um, and I'm just going to open the floor. Laura, thank you for going first.
Hi, um, I'm sure there's a lot of feelings out there. I'm just going to really quickly say that um, I feel like I want to just suggest that a possible move forward, um, just because I'm, I think the crux of it for me with this communication is that I'm really having a lot of trouble with the overall dynamic and this us and them feeling that keeps coming up, and I don't want to pretend it's not there. Um, and so I just want to suggest that the board consider participating in some sort of facilitated discussion to unpack it. I, I, I can understand that not everybody really wants to engage in that, but I really think that in order to move forward, and I've said this before, to really get the buy-in from all the towns, we can ignore this. So um, I just want to suggest that that is a possibility that sort of acknowledges the timeline that we're currently operating on and addresses some of the concerns that have come up.
So just to clarify, the facilitated discussion that you're suggesting is a, a, a discussion of the planning board that speaks to the particular issues before us? Or a more general kind of training session about how to have, do a better job with difficult conversations?
Well, I, I think that there's a differ, difficult conversation that we're not having, and we need to have it. And we need somebody that's not in this grouping to help us with that. We have to unpack it, and I don't think we can really genuinely move forward and move this, do this work to the best of our ability until that happens.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that suggestion. Deb? You're muted.
I would, I would jump on that suggestion. I think it, it would mean one more meeting, because I think we have agendas that we have to do. But I do think that it would be useful with an outside facilitator to really talk about the us and them, the, that, the us and them that keeps coming up and interferes. And I know it's, I know it's an extra meeting, and I know it's a lot of time, but I also think it can be a really effective way to help us be much more efficient moving forward. So thank you, Laura. Um, I would, I would second that.
Okay, is that a motion, Laura? And then we can get a second and we can discuss it?
Yeah, yes. I didn't, I didn't realize it could be a motion, but yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, so there's been a motion, and it's been seconded to have an outside facilitator uh, come in and assist the board in discussing how, how would you like to phrase it, Laura? The, the us and them uh, discussion? How, how would you like that to, to read? I mean, I can, I can read from the letter.
I, I'm not a big motion maker. I'm open to suggestions, but um, I think that I, I would like to have an outside facilitator um, help us examine the difficult, I, I keep on going back to difficult dynamic. That's the best way to kind of summarize.
Okay, the difficult, go ahead, Deb. You have an idea?
No, I think that that's, I think, to help us explore the difficult dynamic that interferes with our ability to make progress.
Okay. Um, and that's your second, right? Deb, that's, that's, that's the motion you have seconded?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Bonnie, then Colin.
Um, thank you. I, I think that um, perceived or not, it's the district divide, and I would totally support Laura's motion. And I think that one of the things that I just witnessed for the past forty-five minutes, I think that's probably the best discussion we've had in two and a half years on discussing the composition of a new school committee. Because we spoke about the fact, it's not going to be us and them. It'll be, it will be, if it goes through one school district, we listen to each other. I didn't agree with everyone who spoke, and I'm sure there were people who didn't agree with me, but we really heard each other's opinions. And way too often, that does not happen. And the motivation behind our letter was really never to stop this. So many, I can't say all members, but many of the members of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District are there to find what is the best way to give our children the most, the best education, and really to enrich our communities. This fighting doesn't make any potential homebuyers excited about coming in here. And I think we all have to look at the impact this has on all of our communities. It's, it is not healthy. It hasn't been healthy. I could speak for, I'm not going to speak for Berkshire Hills. I'm speaking from the people on our staff who have expressed a lot of these opinions. We are not in any way, we didn't know what to do. And we felt very much we had at this point to say something, and it's almost like you're at your wits' end. What, how can we help move on? And how can everybody else help us to move on so that you don't lose us? I mean, you could go ahead without, you know, there are four of us, but I think we bring something to the group.
You bring a lot to the group, and we don't want to lose you, Bonnie. Colin and then Don.
Right.
Um, how, uh, first of all, I think the facilitated conversation is a fine idea. I, I do think that maybe there's some hard conversations that aren't happening. Um, but how does that resolve the, the, I guess, call them complaints in the Southern Berkshire Regional School District's letter? There's, how, how many of the people that signed that? There are two on this committee or, or, or there, I can't remember. I think there's
There are four, there are four on this committee who signed that letter. We have fours, yeah, we have fours, so how do, committee reps on our planning board from Southern Berkshire.
Okay, so a, a, and those four people sign the letter. So how does that resolve the, you know, the issues of the other six people? Are we going to include them in it? I mean, I'm not, I'm, I'm unclear on, on how that resolves that part of it. Um, that's just my comment on this particular thing. I have other things to say about that letter, but I'll, I'll save them until we deal with this um, motion.
Okay. Uh, Don?
So I've read this letter, and we've read this letter, and we've read it. I read this letter as saying that the position of these four is that the high school at Mount Everett has to continue or they're out of it. Am I misreading this? I would ask those people.
So I, I, I just, I'm going to let Laura respond, and Bonnie respond, and Jane respond, and Danell respond, because they are signatories to the letter. But I just want to caution everyone again to speak for themselves, because I don't think we should assume that everyone had the same idea when they signed the letter, right? People, people take positions for different reasons. So let's hear from the four who are before us. Um, whether they think this motion will help address the issues that are the issues that are laid out in this letter or not. I think, I think that's the best we can do. I don't think we should be speaking for people who aren't here uh, or trying to interpret motivation. That's my two cents. Laura, did you have your hand up or no?
Uh, I don't.
Okay, so, so we'll go to, I mean, obviously Laura made the motion. She thinks uh, this is a a reasonable way to respond, uh, and she's a signatory to the letter. So I think that sort of speaks for itself. Bonnie? And then Jane.
All right, I I just wanna be clear that for the fact that this was going out to the public, those were not signatures. We listed every member on the school committee. It was a unanimous vote of all those present. There were two people who were not present. One of whom contacted me and said he absolutely would have voted for it. This, I cannot speak as as Lucy has brought up, if this will resolve the issues of faculty of staff members, of other community members. But I think there is a possibility of a facilitated discussion that can help address what Laura brought up, this incredible tension that we have experienced, or I should say I have experienced. I will not speak for the other three. And the hope that we can move ahead. But it will not, Don, address a number of the issues there, but maybe bringing them up through a facilitated discussion means that we can get answers to some of the other issues.
Thank you, Bonnie. Jane?
I have a couple of things to say about, and I'm gonna address the motion at this point and and then bring up other things if I have time afterwards. I think that um already there's been an effect by our letter because you opened the meeting saying that we should not be interrupting. We should not be assuming, we should think that people are acting in the best interest of the group. I have witnessed behaviors that are opposite to that in many meetings that people can get the recordings of and hear uh people being accused of various things and being interrupted. But if because you said that in the beginning, we've had a better meeting tonight. If we can reiterate that, that this is the decorum that we're looking for in the future and that members of the school committee from Southern Berkshire do not feel offended when they leave a meeting. Uh, I think that would be great. It doesn't solve some of my issues about how we're proceeding, but it does make it more possible for us to have productive conversations like we had tonight. And I do want to make it very, very clear that the members from Southern Berkshire on this board have been accused of manipulating the, our full committee. And this is not the case. Uh, every person on the school committee gave their opinion, contributed to this. It is a reflection of their feelings. We would not presume to write on their behalf. Thank you.
Okay, is there any more discussion on the motion? Because I I do wanna wrap that up and then we do have attendees who may have um wanna weigh in on the public comment. Don?
As Jane has pointed out, without the mediation, without somebody to lead us, you've taken the steps necessary for our conversations to be polite, and I thank you for that. And so we don't need uh a facilitator for that. I don't see why we need a facilitator to talk about the pace at which we work. We're working at a pace. I don't see any point in the facilitation being offered. We should discuss the issues. Should we slow down? Can we slow down? It Jane has said there's some information that she wanted, but she hasn't gotten. I'd like to know what that is and what Jake's answers have been to that. We can talk about that. But I don't think we have to spend time with a facilitator just learning again to be polite to each other. I think we've demonstrated tonight that we can all do that. So I'm opposed to the motion.
Okay, um. What I said at the beginning of the meeting, it's not the first time I've said it. We we did a really good job tonight, but sometimes passions flame. Uh, and that's what happens when you discuss tough issues. Um, I think that if uh Laura and Bonnie and the others who uh have felt uncomfortable at our meetings think that this will help. We should do it. It's a little thing to do. Um, but it's important that people feel comfortable at the meetings and if people will feel more comfortable having an outside facilitator, I can tell you I'll feel a lot more comfortable having an outside facilitator facilitate this discussion than having me do it. It'd be a lot better for me. Uh, I would love that. So I I hear you, Don, but um this seems like a really constructive step. Uh, and if others on the board wanna do it and feel this will help, I'm in full support. So how about we, John, do you wanna call the question?
No, actually, I I wanna speak to it first.
Okay.
I know I'm sometimes dropped a hammer, but only when I know I have a super majority. I think this is an excellent idea and what concerns me about this is that I, you know, honestly, uh, as as Lucy says, we we do sometimes um get passionate about things. But uh, I'm, I'm not so sure that's the problem. The problem isn't whether or not we're being polite to each other. What I'm hearing tonight, which I I sort of didn't get from the letter, but I got clearly from Bonnie, is that there's lots of people in this, in the Southern Berkshire School District, teachers and staff who who are uncomfortable. And to me, I would, and I would much, I I think it's essential that we address that immediately. Because we all need to do this together. So while I'm I'm in favor of facilitated meeting among the twenty-four of us, I don't know that that's gonna address the problem that Bonnie brought up and the, and the one I'm really concerned about because I'm concerned about the people who have put in all of the work, the good work and devote their lives to teaching and to taking care of students in Southern Berkshire. And they're not feeling comfortable at this point. And they're the people's discomfort that I'd like to see us address.
Um, okay, um. Danell, we're gonna hear from you and then um Jake, I'd like to hear from you on the ed visioning and how you see that um playing into the issue we're discussing now. So, Danell, go.
Yep, thank you. And sorry, this might be a little out of time. I thought I had my hand up for the longest time and just realized it wasn't up. Um, I wanted to circle back with what, one of the things Bonnie said, and um I couldn't agree more, that this meeting has run really well. Um, I felt like it was easy to hear everybody's thoughts and everyone was very respectful and it's something that I've been waiting for for a long time. Um, I know I haven't been able to attend a lot of the meetings, but the ones I have attended, it was al- almost cringe-worthy. Um, I I just tonight was totally different. And I thank you, Lucy, for saying that at the beginning. You've said, you've said it before and I, it was probably at a meeting I wasn't at. I've never heard it and I just, I feel like I've waited a couple of years to hear that and to then just actually have it be put in practice. So I do think the mediator is important. I think it would help us get past that hump like uh Laura was talking about. And no, Don, it's not gonna solve all the, all the points uh we brought up in the letter um that we wrote, uh, but it could open the door for people to feel more comfortable in talking about their concerns. Um, one big concern from the, from the faculty was that they just didn't feel comfortable enough with all the back and forth. And um, you know, some level of disrespect towards each other to even bring it up. And so a lot of the points that were in that letter have been brought up several times and just not, you know, we haven't gotten any further than someone bringing it up and just kind of brushing it aside or moving on. So um you know, it's true, it's a mediator might not solve every single issue in that letter, but it's a good step to try to get people to open up and talk about their concerns uh more.
Okay, so I'm cognizant of time. I do wanna have a public comment period or people okay staying longer? I see there are more hands up. Are people willing to stay another fifteen minutes or so to finish up this discussion? Okay, great. All right, um, so Bonnie, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to what um Don said. I think what we'll have to do is it's incumbent upon us as the, as the composers of the letter to come, excuse me, not to bitch, but to come with specific issues. If we feel comfortable in what Laura is suggesting is a facilitated discussion there, we can say X happened, or we read in the extended report that this is going to happen. And I think we will feel more comfortable bringing up some of the specifics that go to what Don's talking about. It's not just the four of us here. It's what, you know, five towns think we're able to do that we can do. But it, we will have to do homework for that meeting.
I would say bravo.
Thank you. Jake, um can you speak a little bit to um the question John raised about how 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 do we broaden this facilitated discussion to include um, the teachers and staff at Southern Berkshire?
Um, it's a good question. I mean, I, what I've maintained for quite a while, as you all know, is the potential act of the ed visioning work to me was really gonna be the community building exercise, which is bringing people together to exchange, to share, to design, um, to imagine. Um, and so I continue to feel like that we still haven't even, we haven't done that. Um, and that to me, um, you know, this, this notion of the ed vision, which you talked about early in the, in the meeting, to me, could be um, the act of some of that bridge building and that sort of shared voice and building this aspiration. Um, I mean, we we have to have an inspiring, compelling story to make this worth doing. It's gotta go well beyond any fiscal savings. It's gotta really be a compelling educational story for both the kids in the community. So I mean, that's the best I can answer. I mean, there's lots of ways to bring facilitators in and in engage with different groups. And I'm happy to sort of, you know, talk to, you know, sort of think through that. Um, but I continue to maintain that bringing the faculty and staff together and these ed visioning exercises and maybe some of the convenings could be a really positive, um, you know, experience.
Peter Dillon and then Colin?
Just a quick then, be- before this call, Beth and I were on another call with six people from each district, both of us, both principals, some teachers, students and community members. A- and, and we're doing some of what Jake's talking about around a a virtual and then an actual uh school visit. So um, we're, we're working hard to try to build some uh bridges and, and I think we're not doing it under the umbrella of this work, but I think it'll contribute to this work.
Thank you. That sounds good. Colin?
Um, so at the moment, the conversation is about, um, or I've heard from, I think, uh, I guess the, the four people on the committee here that are also on the Southern Berkshire School Committee um, that faculty and staff are uncomfortable or they have issues or whatever it is. But earlier in the co- in the meeting, we were talking about trying to find ways to get them to participate. So clearly they're paying attention if they have concerns or they're worried or whatever. Yet they're not able to participate, even though we're a, we're asking them to participate. So I'm, I'm having a hard time reconciling that. If they're paying attention and they have concerns and issues, why aren't they, why aren't they participating in, in these discussions? Are we doing something wrong and not giving them the opportunity? I I don't, I don't know what the, the answer is. We want them to participate because that's what we said in the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, um, Jane?
I think that if the staff and teachers see that we're being listened to on the planning board meetings bringing their concerns, it may help turn the tide. But our experience is the things, the way the communication has been going is teachers and staff feel like they're being told what, what the trajectory is and their ideas about how that might change or the tweaking that was promised about the preferred model is, has not been evidenced. So I think when people are listened to, they're much more apt to be interested. So I think if we can set an example that the planning board members from Southern Berkshire are being listened to and their concerns are being addressed rather than dismissed or argued with, that may have a a trickle-down effect. And I do wanna say we're, we're facing an interesting situation because two of the members uh, of the Southern Berkshire School District who are on this planning board are not running for reelection. So there will that, uh, I I particularly just have the month of October left to try to have a positive impact, but I think there're gonna be two members from Berkshire Hills who also won't be here and I don't. And um, so I think any repair we can do quickly would be good.
So Jane, is this about communications coming from the faculty and staff through the four members? Or is it about the four members? I'm, I'm still confused because
It's about, yeah, it's about these people.
Um, Jane?
Yeah.
Let's observe the rule of no interruption. Let Colin get his question out and then you can respond, please.
Right.
So I heard people saying that the, the faculty and staff have concerns. That, that's what I heard. And I also heard we wanted them to participate. But I, I'm not, I'm not, the two aren't going together in my mind. So then you just said they, it sounds like they're sharing stuff with the four of you and you're voicing that here and then they're getting upset because whatever they voiced didn't get addressed. But we don't know that they're voicing it to you because it's coming through you. I I don't know. I'm, now I'm really confused and I'm just gonna just gonna mute myself because I'm gonna, I'm gonna go around in circles here.
To the best of my knowledge, the faculty and staff are basing it on their personal experience coming to meetings, listen to, listening to uh Zoom meetings. I don't think it is, it doesn't generate from the school committee as far as I can tell, but that, I, I can't answer it better than that.
If they're in the meeting, so let's find a way for them to actually have some participation beyond just listening. I, that, that, I think that's what I said in the very beginning.
Yep, okay, um. And of course, we, we do open the discussion up for public comment at the end of every meeting and did have faculty representatives in our um facilitated discussions on the preferred model. So uh, there have been opportunities, obviously, but I really would like to get a vote on this motion. Uh, we're at seven forty-two now. Uh, let's vote on the motion and then see if we've got some public comments. Uh, because there are people who've been on the phone for two hours and fifteen minutes. Because there are people who've been on the phone for two hours and 15 minutes. And we want community input. Let's, let's get some. So can someone call the question or Bonnie, can you hold your comment?
I'm calling the question then.
Great, thank you. All right. So all in favor of Laura's motion as seconded by Deb? Chuck?
I'm in favor.
George? George? Just gone. Uh, Danell?
Lucy, do we have to vote on calling the question?
And what you do?
Yes, yes, vote for me, yes.
I think Bonnie withdrew her hand. So we have a motion on the floor with no comments, no hands up. So I think we can just go forward to vote.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. So Chuck?
I'm in favor.
Great. George is off. Danell?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Don?
Nope.
Laura?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Patrick? Sean?
Yes.
Michael? Andy? Was that a yes, Michael? Thank you. Andy?
Hi.
Marie?
I guess so.
I was gonna say sure.
Molly?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes. Okay.
And wait a minute, Lucy, I want to change my vote. Hoping that, that, that the folks will specify the exact issues that need to be decided. And so we can all be unanimous. I will change my vote to yes.
Thank you, Don. Really appreciate that. Okay, so we have unanimity on that vote. Well done, Laura. All right, any more comments before I open this up to public comment? Susan?
Yeah, so practically, how's this going to happen? Is this something that Jake finds a facilitator? And, and I know it just came up now. Is there like some timing for this? I just, I just want to have an idea. I don't expect a concrete answer. I just don't know how practically this will work.
Yeah, I mean, I think we will try and identify a facilitator. We will need to go to project management to get that approved. We need some funds for this, folks. So maybe the school committees could reconsider our request in order to fund this. That would be great. But yeah, we're, we're, we'll proceed. You know, the other meetings will proceed as planned. And this is something we're going to have to find time, find time to fold in.
Do, do recommendations, I'm sorry, one last question. Do recommendations, are they generated through project management? Are you soliciting recommendations from anybody that might have an idea about a facilitator? I just, I just don't know how that would work.
Jake?
I, I would definitely encourage, if folks have someone in mind that they've worked with, their organizations work with, please send it along. I, I believe that you've all been down this, this road a couple of times and not necessarily been overly successful securing somebody. So if folks know of somebody, please send it along. I do have a possible lead. So I'm happy to reach out and start to talk to folks. But please send along any referrals and we can have some initial conversations and bring them all to project management.
Colin?
How is this going to work as far as is it going to be 100% public or while we're airing our dirty laundry with one another? I don't, at least I don't want the press there, but I mean.
Yeah, so that's why I asked Laura at the very beginning whether she saw this as a training exercise or whether we were going to dig into the substance. So if we're going to dig into the substance, then it's got to be an open meeting and the press will be there and it will be recorded. If it's a training session, like we used to do with Chris Hazard, and we're not talking about substance, we're talking about how to have difficult conversations, then it's training. And it's not an open meeting. But if we're going to talk substance, it has to be an open meeting. John?
I think Colin brought up an important point. So Lucy actually brought up a larger point, which is what are we doing? And I think we need to answer that. But let's assume that we're talking about digging in rather than training. I think maybe one of the difficulties here, and Jane brought it up, and Bonnie broke both, is faculty and staff at Southern Berkshire being, feeling uncomfortable, not just with the process, but, but I'm assuming with how they can be involved in the process. And since it was the Southern Berkshire School District that brought this, I'm sorry, committee that brought this forward to us, I, I would propose that, you know, that the Southern Berkshire School Committee take a survey from the teacher, from the faculty and the staff and collate it and, and bring those things forward. And this, this would accomplish two things. One, it answers Colin's question of whose concerns are we really talking about here? The school committee members or the faculty and staff? And that will resolve that. It will also allow the, the faculty and staff to participate in a safe way so that they can have their questions and their concerns addressed and brought forward to this full planning board in such a way that the school committee is going to represent their very specific concerns, but in a way without talking about individual members. So if we're going to go forward with this and have this one meeting, I'm going to suggest that, that if we want to accomplish what we're setting out to accomplish here, which is to address the concerns of the faculty and the staff, we need the school committee to do that in a way that it's properly pre-facilitated.
So I just have to say, it, there's a lot of issues here. This is not specific to faculty and staff only. There are school committee issues. There are constituents that are talking to the school committee. And there are faculty and staff. There are parents. This is wider than that. And I think what they were trying to say, I'm not speaking for everybody, but just listening to the discussion is there's, there's lots of concerns and they're feeling unheard now. I'm happy to survey the faculty and staff and provide whatever way they feel comfortable in sharing that. But I don't think we should narrow it to a box of, it's just faculty and staff who, you know, don't feel comfortable. They felt comfortable. They shared things with both Lucy and Jake when they were there. They made their choices about what they wanted to say when. And I'm going to let them make their choices again. But I don't think we should just box this and say this is the problem where they don't feel comfortable. That's, that's not the whole picture here.
Yeah, I, I just, I would like to, because we're talking about how this committee functions, I would really like to have a conversation about what feels uncomfortable for the school committee members as part of the regional school district planning board that makes those conversations difficult. Because I think that's the conversation. The idea is how do we work together? And that we've been at meetings where people on the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee don't feel they've been treated well or heard or a variety of those kinds of issues. In order for this group to move forward, that's what we have to talk about. There may be community issues. There probably are in every one of the eight towns. There probably are faculty issues in all of the schools. But that's not, but the point here, I think, is to get this group working better and more effectively together so that we can make progress. And that we really just need to talk about what it is that is making it uncomfortable for some people in these meetings that is, that is preventing us from moving forward. And so I think let's not get big. Let's not go anywhere else. Let's talk about what happens when the 20, 20 to 24 of us who show up every month sit here that makes it not work. That, that's my feeling. I think all of the rest of it is, is getting way bigger than anything we can do in one facilitated session. And I think it's not what we're here to do. I think that educational visioning, open community meetings, Jake meeting with the teachers, all of those things are how we're going to address the community and the staff and the faculty. The issue is what's happening here in these meetings and that's what we have to stick to. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Okay, I'm going to take one more comment and then I'm going to open up the public comment. Bonnie?
I respectfully disagree with Deb on this because if we're spending money on this and we're bringing people together for another session, we have to look at what Beth said. If I hear, now this is not hearsay, if I speak to a teacher who says, hey, I'm looking at my options, I don't want to be losing our best teachers because the word as we used it, a sense of being absorbed into a new district. Both the things that go beyond how we work as 23 people together. It goes to the heart of our district. The sense that people have that are early college, high school at Mount Everett is, is like, it, it doesn't rate a semicolon in our work. I think, as I said to Don, we need to do our homework. And however the facilitator can lead us, I think we're working on two prongs. One, us working as a cohesive unit. And four of us are a tiny minority because we don't have the all for, even five wouldn't do it of the 23 or 24. But it's the bigger issue that Beth brought up of what we hear in the community. And when I go to a softball game or a baseball game, and I'm sure it's going to happen in the back, skip balls, and I feel like I'm a target. You know, what are they doing about this? And it goes to the issues Colin raised. There are things that are being said in our community. So I hope in a facilitated discussion, the facilitator would be prepared to deal with both issues. And we, as the four representatives here, would have to come and do our homework. And what, you know, Beth suggested of going out to the faculty and staff, this homework that has to be done for this. I don't think it's just, you know, let's feel good session. I want us to be able to move beyond to other steps. That's it.
Okay. But just to be clear, the motion that was made and seconded, and we got unanimity on, was to bring in a facilitator to help this group work through, what were the words you have, Laura? The difficult
The difficult dynamic.
Dynamic. That's the motion that was made, seconded and voted upon. This other stuff is very important. It's community outreach. It's got to be addressed. It's got to be discussed. But the motion that we passed today doesn't address that. That will have to await further discussion at community outreach and then coming back to the board. I'm going to open up the floor to public comments now. Do any of our attendees want to weigh in? We've lost some, I see, but I see Sharon Gregory's hand is up. Go ahead, Sharon. Christine, can you promote Sharon Gregory?
I already did. Yep, she's all set.
Thank you.
Can you hear now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. You all are doing really, really difficult work. I really appreciate it. But there's some issues that will continually arise. One is that staff and employees will all feel insecure about this enormous change on, in both districts. So one thing that was said during the BC ETF meetings that gave me comfort was that we're going to have a shortage of teachers in, in the not too distant future. And we should keep telling people that. I don't think we, you know, we emphasize it enough on either side, you know, either districts, we shouldn't lose our best teachers. But we've got to tell them the, the bigger story too, and what we're trying to do about education. Second point I'd like to make is that maybe we haven't emphasized enough that what we're trying to do is get the best of both districts, including early college, things like that. Maybe we need to put a lot more of that in, in the words so people can see it. I think we all think that, but from where I sit, I would love that. I've always wanted early college and even early VOTEC. You know, there was a seminar I went to and whether it was early college or early graduation from VOTEC, those were both promoted. So I suggest more of that kind of positive inclusion. The third is that I feel that the committee has a problem with accepting the vote of the majority. Every time things don't go the way some members feel they wanted it to go. People say, we have to rethink this and we're not being fair about this. And that's really hard for me to hear. I have listened to meetings, gone to Dalton every three weeks for three hours and so forth. We've been working at this for a long time. I feel like we have to accept the vote of the majority. This is not just an opinion. It is a result of your hearing all these studies seven years and three years with the, the eight towns. So I'd say that needs to be worked on too. Thank you for listening, Sharon.
Thanks, Sharon. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
That was Nadine seconding. Okay, Chuck?
Yes.
George is off. Danell? Danell? Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Absolutely.
John?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Patrick? Sean? Michael?
Yeah.
Andy?
Can't we do this by acclamation? Yes.
Unfortunately not. Marie?
Yes, thank you.
Molly? And Lucy's, yes. Thank you all. Thank you for your patience.
Thanks, Lucy. Good night, everybody.
Good night.